Good evening, and thank you for joining us for the Fresno City Council District 6 Forum. My name is Blake Zante, and I am the Executive Director of the Mattie Institute, a nonpartisan public policy institute partnered with Fresno State, UC Merced, CSU Stanislas, and CSU Bakersfield. This forum is also presented by GV Wire and CMAC, the Community Media Access Collaborative. I will be serving as the moderator of today's debate. Now, I'll briefly go over the rules for the debate. Each candidate will have two minutes for an opening statement. Each candidate gets two minutes to answer each question with a 30-second rebuttal if granted by the moderator. Each candidate will get a minute closing statement. We ask that the candidates please refrain from personal attacks to keep this forum focused on your plans for Fresno. If a candidate starts to personally attack another candidate, the moderator will interject and remind the candidate of the rule, and a rebuttal may be granted at the moderator's discretion. Time will then resume. If candidates are efficient in their answers, their leftover time will be used to ask additional questions. We ask that candidates not talk over one another and be respectful of each other's time. I have not shared the questions or topics with either candidate. Every four years, Fresno residents have an opportunity to elect a new council member to represent their interests at City Hall. Tonight, we'll get to know the candidates running for Fresno City Council District 6, which represents the northeast part of the city, and learn more about the issues that they care about. Nick Richardson is a reserve officer, holding the rank of Major with the United States Marine Corps, a small-business owner owning his own consultancy, Enrich Inc., and a substitute teacher. A Fresno native, Richardson attended Buchanan High School and Virginia Military Institute. Roger Banactar is an attorney and small-business owner owning his own legal practice, Banactar Law Firm. A father, husband, and Fresno native, Banactar attended UC San Diego and Santa Clara University School of Law. Now, each candidate will get a two-minute opening statement. We'll start with Mr. Richardson.
All right, good evening, and I'd like to start off by saying thank you to CMAC and GV Wire for hosting us this evening. Thank you to Blake for moderating for us, and thank you to Mr. Banactar for joining me up here this evening. So I spent the last 15 years dedicating myself to becoming a proven leader, the kind of person that you can trust to look you in the eye and tell you the truth, the kind of person who will outwork everyone else around them, and the kind of person who has proven, time and again, that no matter when it comes, they will answer the call. Now, I've dedicated myself full-time to this campaign because I'm the kind of leader who will dedicate myself full-time to you. Now, that's exactly the kind of leader that I want down at City Hall, making the important decisions for me and for my family. Now, on November 5th, we come face-to-face with the reality that we're about to lose the only voice on the City Council to speak up for veterans. So I want to show my family, my friends, my neighbors in District 6, the 20,000 veterans that we have in the city of Fresno, and all of you watching who have a family member in uniform, that someone is here to answer the call. Now, leadership is not a job title, and it's definitely not part-time. Leadership is standing up to establishment politicians to fight for the little guy. Leadership is delivering results when it's inconvenient or uncomfortable. Leadership is being willing to resist the temptation of the highest bidder and instead serve the higher purpose. My answers tonight are my own. All the opinions that you'll hear from me are all mine, and I stand by what I say. But everything that I say about these issues is informed by the thousands of conversations that I've had with the people most affected by these issues: you. So I'm hoping that you can join me on November 5th. We can make a statement, and we can reflect the values of the community that raised me, the values of District 6. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Richardson. Now we'll go to Mr. Banactar.
Blake, thanks for hosting. Excuse me. Blake, thanks for hosting. I'm happy to be here tonight. Ladies and gentlemen of Fresno, my name is Roger Banactar. I'm a native Fresno boy. I grew up here, been here my whole life. Graduate of our K-12 Clovis Unified Schools. As Mr. Zante mentioned at the beginning, I left Fresno to earn my bachelor's degree at UC San Diego, my law degree at Santa Clara. And as a young man out of law school, I had job offers in every city you could want to be. But for me, family is everything, and that's why in my campaign I've always said, "We're putting Fresno families first." So when I came home to Fresno, I came home to my parents, who've been together for 50 years, my grandmother, my aunts, my uncles, my cousins, to my home. Because I had hoped that one day God would bless me with my own family, and He saw fit to do so. I've got a wonderful wife and two great kids. And selfishly, I'm running for City Council because I want Fresno to realize the potential that it can have so that maybe when I'm an old man, my sons will choose to come home to Fresno like I did. I am the proven problem solver here that is on the ballot for November. I am the candidate that is going to deliver for Fresno families and Fresno small businesses. I'm endorsed by everyone who your family counts on to keep us safe: Sheriff Mims and Zenoni, Fresno police officers, Fresno firefighters, Fresno deputy sheriffs, Fresno county prosecutors, and everyone who we count on to keep our community safe because as a father and a small-business owner, public safety needs to be Fresno's top priority. I'm also the only candidate on the ballot that's ever paid a property tax bill, run a business budget, hired people, and created jobs in Fresno, and changed diapers to raise kids. These are things that give you perspective. They give you experience. They give you the right values. And those values are what I'm going to bring to work for you at City Hall every day. Those values are going to be accompanied by a proven track record of success. Everybody who wants to run for office says they're going to fight for you, but none of them can prove it. I've got 20 years of proof of fighting for Fresno families and small businesses. I just did it recently for 900 of our friends and neighbors that were torched and had their paychecks bounced. I chased big-money assets out into a bankruptcy court and brought home the bacon for those people. And I'm going to bring home the bacon for you, District 6 and Fresno, as your city councilman.
Thank you, Mr. Banactar. Now let's go ahead and move on to our first question. Let's start with background and experience, and you both sort of alluded to this in your opening statement. But neither of you have held elected office before. What makes you qualified to serve in this position? And as a political newcomer, if elected, how will you be an effective council representative on a council that may ideologically disagree with you at times? We'll start with Mr. Banactar, and then go to Mr. Richardson.
Sure. Well, I'd like, in my view, Fresno City Hall needs to be run like a business, a business where the residents are the client. You need to be responsive to the interests of the client. And as a business, Fresno City Hall is responsible for overseeing thousands of employees. We need experienced leadership. What does that mean? Someone who knows what it's like to sign both sides of a paycheck, someone who signed as the employee and the person who has to carry the water to make sure the payroll clears. That's me. I'm the only one that can deliver that. And that's why I'm endorsed by the Fresno Chamber of Commerce, by the Lincoln Club, by the Business Journal, by other assets in Fresno that make Fresno a great place to live. I am running for City Council for three key things: to make Fresno streets and neighborhoods safer, to bring prosperity to Fresno economically, and to make Fresno reach its potential. We're the fifth-largest city in the state. We can do more here. We can realize our potential if we have the right leadership. And that right leadership comes down to experience. You have to know how to navigate the government code and the complex systems of rules which affect everything that our city does. And I'm the only one that has that experience. Heck, I've even fought against City Hall for small businesses. I've stepped up for small businesses when they've had their use permits revoked and kept them open so that people could support their families and put food on the table. That's the kind of experience we need in City Hall, and that's what I bring to the table.
Thank you, Mr. Banactar. Mr. Richardson, now to you.
Talking about City Hall that serves the people of the city, that's the only job that City Hall really has. Your job is to serve the people of your district, and by extension, serve the people of your city, and that's it. Now, you can look at where a politician or a candidate spends their time, and that's going to indicate what they really value. There's a reason that we put our time and effort not into smoky back-room dealings or in meeting with higher-ups or candidates of other offices. We put our time into going to your homes. 25,000 houses isn't walked very quickly. It takes a while to do, but that was our effort. We know that people are struggling out there, so trying to get money from the people who I want to work for in the first place wasn't my idea of a well-run campaign. So that's not what we did. We spent our time going into local businesses, going to all of your homes. You may recognize me or someone in my family from your Ring camera because we've been there. The only thing that we are going to City Hall to do is to take your voice downtown. Now, in the Marine Corps, I had the opportunity to be in charge of the payroll and hiring and firing and the careers and the records of a bunch of Marines, 450 to be exact. And I'm very proud of that. I'm very, very thoroughly aware of the administrative requirements of that. And that's very important. Running my own business, I was exposed to an entirely different world that really opened the door and showed me what a lot of folks are struggling with here in the city. Shoot, in District 6, two weeks ago, we just had another favorite business of mine. One of our local businesses shut down, and unfortunately, right before they were shut down, they were vandalized. It's time to be done with that. It's time to get rid of the career politicians. It's time to be done with the establishment, the big-money interests, these secluded backers in these smoky rooms, and bring government back to the people. I served the Marines in every unit I was in. Although I outranked them sometimes, sometimes they outranked me. Regardless, we are here to fight together and to serve one another. As a servant for my entire adult life, I am here to serve. Point blank. End of story.
Thank you, Mr. Richardson. Now let's move on to some of the issues that face Fresno right now. Homelessness remains a concern in the city of Fresno, as you both know. In the wake of a U.S. Supreme Court decision in June, the city of Fresno passed new legislation to enforce anti-camping regulations. What is your position on this new ordinance, and how would you address the homelessness crisis as a council member? We'll start with Mr. Richardson on this one, and then Mr. Banactar.
So the ordinance, I believe, is a step in the right direction. I think that clearing out these encampments is vital, both to the safety of families and to the success of small businesses. Nothing drives away business or drives away families from enjoying themselves like an encampment, a homeless encampment. Because these aren't just groups of folks who are down on their luck. Let's be honest. These are areas where drugs are trafficked, where humans are trafficked, and weapons are trafficked. These are unsafe areas. Sometimes individuals who don't need to be in the city at all, maybe due to a warrant somewhere else, maybe because they're fugitives here in Fresno, they find refuge in these encampments. So I think that the bill itself is a step in the right direction, without a doubt. However, there has to be a backside. We have a phrase in the Marine Corps that when all you have is a hammer, everything looks like a nail. There's not one fix to homelessness because every story behind a homeless person on the street is not the same story. We have to come at it with what I call the four Ts. You've got to start with tough love. You've got to have triage. There's got to be temporary housing, and there's got to be training for these folks. There's got to be training and treatment on the backside, whether it's educational substance abuse counseling, which I have extensive background in the Marine Corps, mental health care, which I have extensive experience with in the Marine Corps, educational opportunities, childcare opportunities, legal services, whatever. It needs to be on the backside and to triage them appropriately. So I think the ordinance is a great step in the right direction, but then what? We need something on the backside to make sure that the homeless in these encampments don't just become the homeless somewhere else in Fresno.
Thank you, Mr. Banactar.
As the only father on the ballot, my concern with homelessness is how it affects our neighborhoods and our communities. I have a heart. I've got empathy for those that have found themselves in bad situations, have found themselves on the street as a result of maybe one or two big life events that went the wrong way. But this approach that has been taken statewide of a cash cannon really has to stop. I'm supported by all of law enforcement because I understand that homelessness is both a public safety risk for our families and our neighborhoods, but also for the homelessness themselves. That's why I'm supported by both at the county and city level Sheriff Zenoni and Fresno police officers and the deputy sheriffs. There's an interplay between the city and the county where we can get together and put our resources together to more effectively deal with homelessness. My approach is a very direct one, and it's a practical one. I want to engage our nonprofits, religious and not, to get together with the city and the county to put together navigation centers. These are ideas that we've seen adopted in other cities that had some success. San Diego did it. Mayor Dyer, to his credit, actually tried to get this off the ground, but it was stymied by COVID. COVID's gone. We need concrete steps. I'd like to create navigation centers where we carry the freight with the county. We can pool our assets with our neighborhood communities, which are all affected. Clovis is getting hit by Fresno homelessness. Fresno is getting hit by Clovis homelessness. Kerem and all the neighborhood communities. We can get together with the county, which the county is the first party to get the mental health resources, put together these navigation centers, see who actually wants help, separate the wheat from the chaff, give those that are responsive to rules and have skin in the game more help, and that way we will address homelessness. But the cash cannon stops with me. I want results. I want measured metrics, and we're going to deliver that for Fresno with the help of the support that I have from law enforcement.
Thank you. Next question. Cost of living is on the minds of many Fresnans at the current moment, as you both know, and certainly many Americans during this election. Relative to the rest of the state, however, many consider Fresno an affordable city, but costs are still rising. How would you work to address cost-of-living issues in Fresno on the council? And we'll start with Mr. Banactar on this question.
I'm a lifelong Fresnoan, and I'm the only candidate on the ballot that's ever pulled a permit to build anything. I understand what some of the barriers are to housing. One of the big ones is that, directly, we're out of land. We have managed to box ourselves in. There's nowhere really in District 6 to do any significant development. We need to be able to grow. And what does that mean? We have to work with the county for a better tax-sharing agreement so that we can build reasonable homes. And when I say reasonable homes, I don't like to use the term "affordable housing" because affordable housing assumes these $400,000 apartments that are in areas that most families don't want to live. I'm talking about housing which helps a small family get their foot in the door, build some equity, have a backyard to play catch in. We need to do this, and we've seen the neighborhood communities eat our lunch. I mean, right now, we have track homes on Avenue 9 that are $800,000. If you would have told me in 2012 that was there, I would have asked you if you're going to try and sell me beachfront property in Omaha next. This is all a function of the mismanagement of the future of Fresno when it comes to housing. We need to put Fresno families first, get some starter homes built so that people can progress, build their family, build equity, and grow a more prosperous future for Fresno economically. That will also bring in new jobs. That will also bring in economic growth. It's somewhat a chicken and the egg, but there's a direct interplay between housing and economic growth. And being the only candidate that was supported by the Fresno Chamber of Commerce, the Association of Building Contractors, and the carpenters, I understand how that process works because I've seen it firsthand. I've dealt with it firsthand, and I've done it even on my own. So we need that level of experience, and I'm the candidate that can deliver that on Fresno housing on Day 1 for District 6 and all of Fresno.
Thank you, Mr. Richardson.
I feel this topic very personally. So when I moved home, when I got off active duty and came back to Fresno, I sold a home in downtown Honolulu, Hawaii to move back. After selling that home, I came back to Fresno, Fresno, California, and I can't afford to buy a home here. That should tell you something. We've let it get absolutely out of control. Now, there are things that we can do at the lower end for folks who are looking to get off the streets or out of transient housing into permanent housing. The Pavarello House got a $2 million contract with the city to build 26 small homes. That's fantastic. We can do things like lobby for Section 8 changes to make Section 8 more applicable for landlords who just want to have people come in and use their homes, right? Make the money that they were going to make and give them at a discounted rate to people who need them. But there are also things we can do for the rest of us, for the millennials, the folks who are looking to buy their first home, who are sick of renting. Things like that, we can make sure that rent control does not come to Fresno. If I'm elected as your city council member, rent control is not taking another step forward in Fresno, and I will do whatever I have to do to make that happen. Yes, a city-county tax-sharing agreement is also important. I think that's a good point. And I've spoken to members at both the city and the county level to include developers who refuse to do business in Fresno anymore because it's too onerous. Listen, I wasn't an economics major in college, but anyone who's taken Basic Economics 101 can tell you that as you drive down the supply, you drive up the demand. So the answer for more realistic housing, we'll say, is not making it less accessible to people. It's increasing that supply. A lot of that will be infill, and there are great SEQA exceptions that we can use to get that infill done for folks who want to move into their own home for the first time. That's what we need to do.
Thank you. Appreciate it. And on that note, let's transition, do a deeper dive into housing. Proposition 33 would allow cities to control rents on any type of housing, including single-family homes and new apartments for new tenants. While this is a state ballot proposition, it certainly impacts a major city like Fresno. What's your position on rent control, and how would you deal with affordable housing as a council member? We'll start with Mr. Richardson, then go to Mr. Banactar.
I will come out at the very beginning and say I'm personally no on 33. I don't believe that I trust the homes of future Fresnans to whatever city council may look like down the road. I can tell you that's not fair to the folks who are looking to develop these homes, and it's not fair to the people who are looking to move into these homes, first and foremost. Now, as far as affordable housing, there are places around the city, even in District 6, that we can use to get people, we can build more houses, we can get people in homes. I want to put roofs over heads, and that's every head of every different socioeconomic status. Those who are homeless, I was just walking last week on the southwest portion of our district. There's a mobile home park there called La Ha Sienda. Now, I can tell you, it was probably some of the most depressing, heavy-hearted walking that I've done because although I was there to talk to the people who were present, the ones who were in the homes there, every four houses looked like this: someone in a mobile home, destroyed, dilapidated building, condemned unit that's all boarded up, empty vacant lot. And you repeat that all the way around the entire park. That's disappointing. And the folks who live there say it was almost better 10 years ago when it was a drug haven. Think about that. Now, La Ha Sienda underwent a city purchase, and then a purchase from an outside buyer from up north. That did not do the folks who lived there any services. In fact, their quality of life there is worse now. So as usual, it's the government getting in the way of people's lives. Government is not the solution. More government is usually the problem. And we've seen it in the southwestern portion of our district, La Ha Sienda. We've seen it in the northern portion, up at Woodward Bluffs, and we've seen it in the southeast, between Bullard and Herndon, to those homes that I've walked as well. More government is not the answer. Rent control and Prop 33 is not the answer as well.
Thank you, Mr. Banactar.
Thank you. Prop 33 is a bad idea for a multitude of reasons. One, I've made it very clear from the beginning that I'm the local control candidate. You do not ever cede control up to the state. Every time you take control away from the local community, you will get worse results. You will get less accountability, and you will have indifference to what's really happening on the ground. So anytime the state proposes or there's a ballot measure which says that we're going to cede our control to give away our voice, to give away our power to the state, it's a bad idea. Rent control is no exception to that. Rent control is something that actually will drive down the availability of housing. It is going to push housing, it pushes landlords to not invest in more housing. It pushes them to not improve their existing housing. It is bad for renters. It is bad for families. In this campaign, I'm putting families first. That is the core mantra of what we've been doing here. Every policy that I put forward will be measured by the metric of, "Does this make Fresno families better off?" Prop 33 and rent control does not. We will see more deterioration in homes. And apart from that, it will drive homes out of the hands of local owners. Your average retired couple perhaps may have a home that they kept and they rented. That's going to end up in the hands of a hedge fund. You don't want that. That is going to drive up rents annually at market rates. They will ratchet it up on our friends and neighbors. We don't want that. We don't need that. What we do need is to build more houses, and how do we get there? We need people in City Council like me who have actually pulled permits, who have actually fought for conditional use permits, who have reviewed and fought over SEQA applications. You need experience in City Hall in Day 1, or else this is going to slide. And we can do better. We can tackle this. But we have to start electing people with real-world, practical experience, and I'm that guy on Day 1.
Thank you. Another state ballot proposition that certainly has a lot of impact in the city of Fresno: Proposition 36. Public safety is on the minds of many residents, as I'm sure you both know, specifically when it comes to protecting small businesses. Another state ballot initiative, Prop 36, would increase penalties on theft and drug crimes. What is your position on this? And as a council member, how would you address public safety concerns? We'll start with Mr. Banactar, then Mr. Richardson.
I'm really proud to say that I am the choice of law enforcement and public safety. I'm endorsed by Sheriff Mims, Sheriff Zenoni, the Fresno prosecutors, the Fresno deputy sheriffs because I really understand this issue, and I understand it intimately. And as a father and a business owner, there is nothing more that is more important to me than keeping our community safe. And we need to make that job one in City Hall. As your city councilman, I am going to drive that focus home every day. Prop 36 is a great step in making our neighborhoods safer. We are very fortunate to have an honorable and committed family man as a sheriff in this town. Sheriff Zenoni took the baton from Sheriff Mims very honorably, has kept a tradition of law and order, a tradition of practical and effective law enforcement techniques, and brought it forth here in supporting Prop 6, Prop 36. I'm very proud to say that I was one of the first locally to endorse it. I actually worked the signature drives to help get the word out. I posted about it on my social media. I talked to community members about it, and it's something that is an essential tool in pushing back against crime. We've seen it grow. We've seen catalytic converter theft. We have porch piracy. We have a host of different things that have flourished because we haven't pushed back against crime. And the key way to do that, I think, is increasing police presence. It's unfortunate, but I mean, if you and I walk by a car that has a window down and there's a bag there, we have no temptation to touch it. Unfortunately, though, there are people in our community that the only reason that they won't is if they see that black-and-white drive by. And as our city councilman, I have already signed the pledge: no new cops, no new firefighters, no new budgets. Job one is public safety. And as the choice of law enforcement and public safety, I will deliver that for us. I support Prop 36 wholeheartedly, and I'm going to make sure that our law enforcement has the tools it needs to keep our neighborhoods safe.
Thank you, Mr. Richardson.
Sure. I'll start off by saying that I am yes on Prop 36. Now, talk about law and order. Not only were two of my uncles Fresno cops for a long time, but also I spent the last 12 and change years of my life in the Marine Corps, a society, right, a branch of service where you can be kicked out for things like marijuana use or adultery. We are very serious when it comes to our law and order and what we hold near and dear to us. Yes, absolutely. I would love to see an increase in our police force. I'd love to see an increase in our firefighting force, and that goes for all of our first responders for that matter. However, when it comes to supporting them, you wouldn't send someone into combat missing their bulletproof vest. You wouldn't send someone into a dangerous situation unarmed. So when it comes to our first responders, instead of just adding more numbers and not increasing their benefits and not increasing what the city's doing for them, we've taken specific steps in my campaign to make sure that firefighters and the police officers and our sheriff's deputies and our CAL FIRE stationed locally and CHP stationed locally and our veterans, you name it. If they're wearing a uniform, we put the priority in their welfare and their benefits. So things that we can do for them, yes, we can make it cheaper for them to get their children education, which is one specific initiative that we've been working on. But also, we need to invest in the mental health. We need to invest in the rest of the police officer or the firefighter, the entire person. The numbers look really good on paper when you can leave and say, "Five, 10, 15 more were added." But if you don't increase the quality of life and actually help the families of those first responders, the plan is half-baked. So we're here to make sure that, yes, absolutely, I am a fan of the proposition. But keeping Fresno safe is not just a numbers game. It's a people game. And until we invest in the people, we are not going to be looking out for them the way that they look out for us.
Thank you. Moving on to another topic that's important to our community, but not necessarily in the jurisdiction of the city of Fresno: education. The city of Fresno doesn't really have jurisdiction over education policy, but it certainly impacts the city both directly and indirectly. Measure H is a bond initiative for Fresno Unified School District that, if approved, would increase property taxes to fund school improvements. Meanwhile, Measure A, a bond for Clovis Unified, will be on the ballot as well, but will not raise any new taxes for Clovis residents. In District 6, there are approximately 40,000 voters that attend Clovis Unified schools and about 8,000 voters in Fresno Unified. What are your thoughts on these measures and their potential impact on your district? We'll start with Mr. Richardson on this one, then Mr. Banactar.
So we'll start with the big one. We'll start where most of the people are, right, in the northern and eastern portions of District 6. So this is your Clovis Unified, your Clovis North, your Clovis West school districts, and part of Western Buchanan's district, where I went to school. I believe that Measure A is a positive. First of all, Clovis Unified has done a great job of managing their money for years, and it's been proven with their scholastic achievements, their sports achievements, their facilities, the public events that they're able to hold at all of their school grounds. I'm always proud to go back to a Buchanan High School football game or to go every time I sign up to be a substitute teacher for one of the Clovis Unified schools to see the state of the schools. Yes, buildings get old. I understand that. But Clovis Unified compared to their Fresno Unified counterparts are living the high life. Yes on A. Let's move down to H. Let's move down to the southwest portion of our district, your Hoover and Owani areas, specifically around McCartell and Eaton Elementary Schools. Those areas down there are managed by Fresno Unified School District. Fresno Unified School District, in my opinion, has not done a very good job of managing their money over the last few decades. their money over the last few decades, and we've seen that. The budget of Fresno Unified is bigger than the budget of the city of Fresno. I mean, they're what, the fifth biggest school district as an employer in the entire state? It's insane that they are this big, they have this many quote-unquote professionals in there, and they are still this poorly managed. Now, I understand their superintendent search has been entirely separate headache, but I'm happy to be endorsed by one current and one former member of the Fresno Unified School Board who has had it. They've had it with this mismanagement. And as a fiscal conservative, throwing more money at the problem is not the solution. So I would vote no on H.
Thank you, Mr. Benakdar.
As the only father on the ballot, the survival of the schools is very important to me. I'm a product of our public schools. My children go to public schools. I hope that they will be able to continue in those schools that are adequately funded, safe, clean. When we're talking about these measures, though, we have to be practical about the implications. We are talking about your money. We are in a time where all costs are up. Every household's budget is stretched. So if we are going to have measures that are on the ballot and that we're going to vote for, we have to require some strict accountability and transparency on where it's going to go. Starting with Measure H for Fresno Unified, I'm deeply troubled by the amount of the impact it's going to have on those homeowners. It is a huge jump for people that might not be able to, they're probably having difficulty staying in their homes to begin with because of the increases of the cost of living. And the impact of those dollars to improve their home values, to improve the education of our children, really, there's a lot that remains to be seen there. I'd need to see a lot more about a direct tie to those dollars and the improvements on the child's experience. I am a fam, again, my campaign is all about putting Fresno families first. I want to know how this affects the kids. As a dad, that's my first and last inquiry. What does this do for the children? And on Measure H, I'm not sold that it adds value for our children. If it doesn't help the kids, it sounds like it's just, it sounds like it's a production grab, and I don't support it. As to Measure A, as you pointed out, Clovis Unified has managed to pay off its prior bond, meet its contractual obligations, meet its spending goals, and continue to grow in a productive way. That's accountability that I like to see. I am also mindful that in District 6, we carry 50% of the freight for the general fund, or nearly 50% of the freight. And part of that is because our neighborhoods are where people want to be. It's the reason why my wife and I have our home there. We want our kids to be able to go to our schools. And Measure A is something that I can support, that's good for our kids, it's good for their future, and it's good for our neighborhoods.
Thank you. Moving on to the next question, something, another concern that residents have in District 6. Last year, Fresno County granted a three-year extension to the CEMEX plant, a mining company with operations along the San Joaquin River. Some District 6 residents have voiced concern about this decision, including environmental and residential impacts. What is your position on the CEMEX plant and how would you work with the county to address concerns? We'll start with Mr. Benakdar and then Mr. Richardson.
The CEMEX plant has a lot of, the CEMEX plant issue has a few different facets. We have to be mindful about environmental impacts. That is mandated by state law. We don't want to operate in a way that we're going to end up with lawsuits and inconsistency, both in our ability to develop and both in the future of Fresno, because we are growing and we are growing at a rapid pace. You have to balance that with reality. The CEMEX plant is something that is the source, it is the bedrock, no pun intended, of how we make cement in Fresno, how we build these homes. We need houses. How are you going to build them without foundations? They're probably going to be sourced out of that CEMEX plant. It's also sourcing our commercial developments where we add jobs in light industrial and other developments. It's an important project. We have to look at it carefully, we have to make sure that it's done properly, because we don't want lawsuits, we don't need shenanigans. Fresno has enough challenges as it is. And that's why, as the only candidate that's ever pulled a permit and the candidate that is supported by the associated building contractors and really the people who built Fresno, I have an intimate knowledge of the significance of the CEMEX contract for Fresno and what it means for developing homes for families. I think we need to approach it with a focus on how it impacts housing, because we have enough problems there as it is. We need solutions and not more impediments.
Thank you, Mr. Richardson.
Sure. With CEMEX, which, for those of you not familiar, is located just to the northwest of Fryent as you proceed north, it is important. And is it in a very volatile or say, very sensitive area? Yes, absolutely. It's right on the San Joaquin River. So I definitely understand when people have their environmental concerns, that's very reasonable. But we have to think about as a city, as my opponent mentioned, jobs are very important. In fact, jobs are what keep us here in Fresno. No jobs, people will leave. And I refuse to see this become another San Francisco. So with CEMEX, if they are in the same location, doing the same thing, mining for the same materials in the same manner, and they pass, their environmental impact reports are clean and they show that there's no change to them, which is a standard established by the state, fantastic. I say they need to stay there, keep making jobs, keep making concrete, and keep making it cheaper for us to build our homes and businesses. Now, as soon as they branch out of that, we have to do our due diligence, not be clouded by the fog of one successful business in Fresno. We need to look at it seriously. And if they want to move somewhere else, mine in a different manner for maybe a different material, that needs to undergo the entire litany of scrutiny again from the beginning. I'm not willing to give a pass to anyone just because in the past, they have provided something to the city. You don't get a pass, you're held to the same standard that every person is held to when they walk outside. So as far as working with the city and the county level, yes, if they're doing the same thing, contributing the same jobs and materials and economy, economic resource to Fresno, fantastic. I hope that it continues, I hope they do a good job, I hope they all stay safe and keep their employment. If not, if it goes outside, we're not making exceptions for anyone to break the rules.
Thank you. Moving on to a related topic, for a number of years, the county and city have been unable to develop a tax-sharing agreement, as you may be aware, and relations have been perceived as strained between both the council and the county board of supervisors. How would you work to mend this relationship with the county as a new council member? We'll start with Mr. Benakdar, or, excuse me, Mr. Richardson, then Mr. Benakdar.
You know, I am a big fan of, you shouldn't wait till day one to start doing the things that you want to do and building those relationships. So I'm happy to have built some great relationships with some of the members of the county board of supervisors, and I plan on having those same great relationships, although be it different political parties, with my companions on city council. Now, when it comes to the city-county tax-sharing agreement, I have brought this up specifically because I have heard from developers. I've sat down with them and had coffee and talked about why they refuse to do business here anymore. And a lot of it is because the added cost that goes into developing in a city that does not have that standing agreement. Now, added cost by a developer, where do we think that goes? Does that end with the developer and they just take one on the chin for the rest of us? No, that gets pushed down to the end consumer. That goes down to me and my fiance as we're looking to purchase our first home in Fresno. That goes down to the millennial or the family or the kids who have just grown up and come home from college to continue their careers in the place they love when they go to buy a home. It drives up the cost for the end consumer and it doesn't help our housing crisis. So yes, I am looking forward to it. There are some negotiations that absolutely need to take place. But coming to these negotiations from a place of humility, from doing your homework and from having an upstanding, honest reputation with the people you're dealing with, is how every good negotiation starts. I've had to deal with a lot of folks in the Marine Corps from different countries, different branches, who maybe didn't agree with us. And no matter what, while you're wearing the uniform, you represent the American people, you have to come to a deal, period.
Thank you. Next, I have some questions for each of you individually, and I'll go ahead and proceed and let you know who I'm asking the question to. Mr. Benakdar, you were recently endorsed by the Fresno County Republican Party, but you only recently re-registered as a Republican after the primary election. How do you explain this change to voters in District 6?
Did you want an answer to the prior question? I didn't know.
Oh, I'm so sorry. Did I not go to you?
No, sir. I mean, as you wish, though. I mean, I haven't answered anything.
Yes, you know, I apologize. We'll go ahead and, if you can answer the prior question about how you'd work with the city and county and mend that relationship.
Sure.
I apologize.
No, no problem. The tax-sharing agreement is a lot more than just a piece of paper. It talks about the financial feasibility of projects. And it's not simply about layered cost, it's also about time. As the only candidate that's ever pulled a permit and the only one that's endorsed by a sitting board of supervisor, I'm endorsed by Buddy Mendez, I know what it takes to build things and I know what it takes to analyze a development plan and see how to make it feasible and get it done. For example, in different areas of Fresno, we have water hookups with the city of Clovis. We have to do things with the county as well. The interplay of the tax agreement is the predictability that businesses need in order to plan and grow. Because money is like water, it flows to the point of lowest resistance. Where it can execute and where it can hit the ground and start working is where it will be put to work. The county tax-sharing agreement is essential to even having land to develop. That's what people aren't talking about. We are nearly landlocked. We need to make a deal with the county from a position of strength, because we fill those coffers, we add a lot to the county coffers. We come from a position of strength in this, in that the county needs Fresno to grow and we need to be able to annex land in. So in coming together with a tax-sharing agreement, we'll be able to more predictably grow the city of Fresno, instead of having these one-off tax agreements for each individual development, which causes uncertainty. Where there is uncertainty, business moves on. And that means we lose what? The opportunity to add new homes for families, real homes. I'm not talking about, again, apartments in congested areas. What the market wants and what I wanted, starting my family, was a three-bedroom, two-bath with a little yard that I could play catch in. That's how we're going to build it out and that's how we're going to attract growth to Fresno. I'm going to bring what we see in the county board of supervisors to city council. And that is what? A professional, calm, and collegial hand. I can have differences of opinion with anybody, but I know how to get to yes. And I'll bring that to work for us in city council every day.
Thank you. I appreciate your answer. Now on to the question that I had asked you previously.
Sure.
Mr. Benakdar, you were recently endorsed by the Fresno County Republican Party, but you only recently registered as a Republican following the primary election. How do you explain this change to voters in District 6?
Sure. I have never been a member of any other party other than the Republican Party. Previously, I was registered as no-party preference. I've never been a candidate for anything before. This is my first foray into, quote, "politics." I don't really think local governance is supposed to be politics, I think it's supposed to be neighbor representing neighbor. But the reality is, is when you're talking to folks at the door, they fairly and reasonably expect you to pick a camp. And for me, the camp that reflects my values most is the Republican Party, because I believe in things like limited government, low taxes, and most importantly, again, as the only father on the ballot, putting families first and that parents' rights are important. I mince no words about it. As a dad, I think parents know best. We need leaders in city council and around us generally, whether it's at the school board and otherwise, that are committed to the idea that parents know best, not bureaucrats in Sacramento, not somebody at the county, not someone, not a substitute teacher on campus. Parents make decisions for children. And that's one of the reasons why I found that I came home to the Republican Party. And it was a very warm welcome and I'm quite grateful for it. And I reflect the values, family values, limited government, responsibility, accountability, and financial prudence. And that's what I bring to the table.
Thank you. Mr. Richardson, a similar question to you. You have said that you are a lifelong Republican. However, recently, the Fresno County Republican Party endorsement was taken away from you. How do you explain this change in a similar question to voters in District 6?
Their decision, I can't explain, Blake, because I wasn't in the room. But I will tell you, when I set off to begin this campaign, I made three promises. And the three promises that I stick to to this day. One is that I will always, always answer the call and show up to have the conversation. Another reason that we're sitting here today. Number two is that I will always look you in the eye and tell you the truth, regardless of how it comes off, if it makes you happy, if it makes you sad, the truth is very important. And number three, I promised that no one, not a candidate, not a volunteer, not a paid supporter, no one was going to outwork me during this campaign or during my tenure in City Hall. Now, there were some groups who didn't take me seriously on those three promises, and I've shown them that I stick to them. So I agreed when someone reached out from a Catholic Business Coalition and wanted to meet with me. I showed up for the conversation. I agreed last week to show up to two different events, to speak with people because they wanted answers. Now, there were a bunch of questionnaires that came out to us before the primary, there were questionnaires from unions and from law enforcement groups and from teachers and from this and that, and I responded to every single one of them. Now, there was one that came from an LGBTQ group in Fresno, guess what? I responded to that as well. I am always here to have the conversation. In fact, I lost another endorsement six months prior to that. And I'm okay with that, because I lost that endorsement as well, because I was willing to respond, to answer the call and show up, because it doesn't matter who you are. If you live in District 6 and you want to know who I am, I am here to work for you and I deserve, you deserve, the chance to get to know me in person. That's the reason that I don't look to someone's party when I walk and knock on their door, Blake. I just walk to every single door because everyone deserves the same opportunity. And if I lose endorsements in the process, I believe it says more about them than it says about me.
Thank you. Moving on to the next question, Mr. Benakdar, all of the primary opponents who did not end up advancing into the general election are endorsing your opponent. Why do you think that they decided to endorse, Mr. Richardson?
You know, I'll be, I guess, a little blunt. I think if you're willing to put yourself on a ballot to have people vote, vote you into office, you have to have some amount of ego. And there's nothing wrong with that. If you don't believe in yourself, who will? But when you perceive someone, I guess it was me, as the sole barrier to whether you will win, you find a common cause and you find someone to rally around. And that was what, I think, at least two of the candidates, because some of them dropped out before the ballots were ever printed, got together and decided, well, if we can't beat Roger, let's get together and try together. Frankly, it's not something I've spent my time analyzing. I've been running this race as if I've been in it by myself from the beginning, like a horse with blinders. I haven't looked to my left, I haven't looked to my right, and I definitely haven't looked behind me. I've been looking to my community, I've been looking to the voters, I've been looking to my neighbors. I've been focused on what it is that I can do to deliver for my neighborhood, for our community, and for Fresno's future. I've focused my energy on building relationships that add value for Fresno. I've focused my energy instead on understanding what Fresno police officers need to make us safe. I've focused my energy on what it is that the Fresno Fire Department needs to make sure that we can grow and build more homes and that they can keep the neighborhood safe. I've focused my energy on how we can bring more job creators to Fresno and how to have Fresno prosper and reach its potential, because it really has a lot of potential. But we need leaders that aren't focused on petty politics. We need leaders that don't need the job. And I'm it. I'm the only candidate that didn't need a job. I'm here to fight for us every day. Every day, I'm going to bring tenacity and professionalism and experience to City Hall. And so that's where I've focused my energy, and obviously, the voters have agreed. I took home the lion's share of the votes in November, and with their support, as long as they choose professionalism, integrity, and family values, I'll do it again on November 5th.
Thank you so much. Moving on to Mr. Richardson, based on recent election filings, you've been outraised by quite a bit, at least five to one by recent counts. How do you plan to get your message to voters with this funding gap between you and your opponent and how do you explain that?
It's these legs, Blake. Every day of the week, Monday through Friday and Saturday and Sunday, I'm out walking. The only way that you're really going to find out, messaging is not one way. I think it's important that people know that. Messaging is not just me yelling into the void at the 79,000 plus or minus 1.3% neighbors that I have in District 6. Messaging is two ways, and that's what you deserve. You don't want mailers every other day in your mailbox telling you why you should vote for me. You deserve to have me in front of you, at your home, here looking at the tree that's busting through the sidewalk, looking at your trash can that hasn't been replaced, looking busting through the sidewalk, looking at your trash can that hasn't been replaced, looking at the homeless encampment that's taking place right across from your house. That's what people want. And we run a very tight ship. The Marine Corps is the least-funded branch of the military. We are far, far accustomed to doing more with less. So my attention hasn't gone to these big-dollar donations. My attention hasn't gone into just blasting my message into the void. My message, or my efforts, have gone to that face-to-face communication. Every time I knock on a door and I get to talk to somebody, like the neighbors that I've met off Willow and Teague that just want a single speed bump in their neighborhood, or one on Cedar and Shepherd who just wanted access to Handy Ride and didn't know how to get it, these are the things that motivate me to continue this campaign. These are the real blessings. And honestly, the enthusiasm and the motivation that I've gotten from getting out and speaking to people in person makes all of this worth it. You all out there watching, you are the folks that I'm in this to work for, and every time that I get a chance to meet you in person and hear from you, that's what messaging should be. It should be a two-way conversation. So does it bother me that I haven't raised half a million dollars for this campaign? Absolutely not. People are hurting out there. I don't need them to throw money at my campaign so I can serve them best. This is why we've had a lot of free events, just to bring the community together, whether it's a picnic, we've held trash pickups, we've volunteered, we've fed the homeless, we've worked at Pavarello House, we've made meals. We've done things to bring this community together, because that's what leadership is. That's what I'm dedicated to doing. So the dollar signs that are next to it, I need enough money to purchase more flyers and to get enough tennis shoes that I can get out there and have these two-way conversations with my neighbors. That's where my dedication's gone.
Thank you.
May I have a small remark?
Yes, of course.
The reality of it is, is the reason I have the support is not for a lack of effort on behalf of Mr. Richardson. Everyone who, I'll give you an example. Fresno police officers. According to Mr. Richardson, today, they're a special interest. Fresno firefighters, according to Mr. Richardson, they're a special interest. They weren't when we both interviewed with them. We both sat down with Fresno Police. He actually interviewed with them before I did. They, we both answered a host of questions to those panels, and what did they decide? They said yes to me, no to him. Fresno Fire, we both sat down with that panel, we both asked questions. What did they decide? They said yes to me and no to him. So the reason that the support isn't there in the mailbox is because they look to experience, they look to professionalism, because, you know, you know why? Because there is no time like the present than to make Fresno neighborhoods safer. And Fresno police officers, they don't want to take the chance.
Thank you, Mr. Richardson.
We need to move forward strong today and on day one in City Council.
I appreciate, we have to move on, unfortunately.
Thank you.
Thank you. So we'll go ahead and move on to one of our, some of our final questions here, and I appreciate you both answering those questions, because I think it's been a topic of conversation recently in the media, and so I think voters really deserve to hear answers on those different hot topics from both of you. Moving on to maybe a lighter topic, in your interactions with District 6 residents, what are their top concerns, and what would they like you to address in your term on the council? What are you hearing from people on the ground? We'll start with you, Mr. Ben Actar, then you, Mr. Richardson.
For most folks, it's security, but security meaning two different things. Both the security of their homes and their businesses, but also the financial security of their families going forward. Fresno kind of suffers from brain drain. Speaking from, again, from experience, as the candidate with the experience, I made a choice to come home where a lot of my friends, when they went on to become doctors and lawyers, et cetera, they just left and didn't look back. We need, we need leadership in Fresno that understands these issues based on that actual experience, that bring it home and know what it's going to take to get families to keep that, to keep the next generation here, to keep that next generation fighting for the future of Fresno. And for me, that's creating the safer neighborhoods, that is creating job opportunities, that's getting Fresno into a niche. We need to expand our future roles economically. Farming has been great for us, ag has been great for us, we're now getting into logistics and other operations, but there's no reason we can't add more good-quality white-collar jobs and good-quality blue-collar jobs. There's a lot of good construction that's just waiting to get unleashed, but we have too much red tape. And as the only candidate that's cut the red tape, that's fought through it, that's appeared before the Planning Commission and fought for a project to get through, we need experience in City Hall to make that difference, to deliver that financial security that our voters and our residents are looking for. And when it comes to the safety of the neighborhood, well, whose judgment is better to trust than the Fresno police officers and the Fresno deputy sheriffs, and Sheriff Zanoni and Sheriff Mims and Fresno firefighters as to who has the judgment to keep your neighborhood safe? They have all stood together, hand in hand with me, and said unanimously, Roger is our guy. And our neighborhood, District 6, should stand up and say the same. Trust the people that keep us safe. Trust Fresno Fire, trust Fresno police officers, trust Sheriff Mims and trust Sheriff Zanoni, and vote Roger on November 5th.
Thank you. Moving on to Mr. Richardson.
So I thought, coming into this, that this would be very simple. I thought folks were just worried about safe streets. They were worried about businesses, namely, small businesses, and they were worried about affordability, and it was a nice package. But getting out and talking to people, every block, every block, has a different concern. They have something else that pops out and looks them in the eyes every time they leave their home. If you're talking about the houses between Willow and Bullard, didn't realize this coming into this, but I've learned, I learned very quickly, their biggest concern right now is any home that goes for sale in those blocks between roughly Cedar and Chestnut, as soon as it goes on the market, it's snatched up by a corporation and is turned into elderly care, destroys the value of the home, they rip out all the landscape, they fill in the pool in the back, and it becomes a blight. It draws down the property value of every other home there, and who do they have to reach out to if they have an issue? No one, because no one talked to any of the homeowners there. I've talked to some of our neighbors up in the north. I'm happy, I've walked through all of the mobile home parks in Fresno, in District 6, rather, and they're very concerned with not only homelessness, but also very open drug use right there next to their homes. There's an overpass right there under 41, and they can sit out on their balcony, and they can look out and watch folks doing drugs. That is their number-one concern right now. If you're talking about the homes that are over, again, off Willow between roughly Louvile and Shepherd, they're worried about the traffic. They have up to a quarter-mile stretch of roads in all those neighborhoods over there, where folks decide to set a new land speed record with no regard for the law, no regard for safety, ripping through these neighborhoods in an unsafe manner. This is their biggest concern, because this most directly affects them. So in my opinion, yes, there are big three things that we can plant our flag in, like safer streets, like success for small businesses and affordability, but at the end of the day, every person, every family here has their own story, and they have their own thing that affects them the most.
Thank you. Unfortunately, that's all the time we have for questions, so now we'll move on to closing statements. Each candidate will have one minute for a closing statement. We'll start with Mr. Ben Actar.
Thank you. Well, Fresno, thanks for the opportunity to talk to you directly. I've, it's been a long campaign, we're about 18 months now here going through this. I've been at many of your doors, I've walked nearly 20,000 doors personally here, and I'm really proud of that experience. I thank you all for opening your homes to me, inviting me in, giving me water on the hot days, it was quite kind of you. On November 5th, there's a lot at stake. The future of Fresno is at stake. Local elections are the place where your voice gets a megaphone. This is where you get to decide how our future is going to be built, what the city's priorities are, and what job one will be. A vote for me in City Council will make, will make public safety a top priority for us. I'll make sure that we have the resources we need to keep our neighborhood safe, to keep our businesses afloat, to keep policies at City Hall that reflect our values. I'm the candidate that's trusted by all of law enforcement and public safety. I'm supported by Fresno police officers, Fresno Fire, Fresno deputy sheriffs, Sheriff's Margaret Mims, and Sheriff John Zanoni, and Fresno prosecutors. Why? Because I understand the issues that are, we are trying to tackle as a community and statewide when it comes to public safety. I'm also endorsed by the Fresno Chamber of Commerce and the Lincoln Club and BizFed, because I understand what it is to run a business. I'm the only candidate that's personally created a job.
Thank you, Mr. Ben Actar. Thank you. That was over one minute, so we're going to go ahead and move to, unless you want to wrap up real quickly in 10 seconds, we'll move on to Mr. Richardson.
I'm the family values candidate. I'm here for you. I'm the only, I'm the only father on the ballot, I'm the only one that's carried a property, paid a property tax bill, ran a business budget, carried a payroll, and changed diapers to raise kids. I'll put families first in Fresno for you every day as your city councilman.
Thank you, Mr. Ben Actar. Mr. Richardson, I'll grant the same time to you.
All right. To my neighbors. In 2009, I answered the call to leave Fresno, the place where I was raised, to serve my country in the Marine Corps, and now, I'm back. I am here to answer the call to serve Fresno directly. Now, I hear your calls for safer streets, and I'm here to serve you by increasing the